We're going to open a meeting. Have the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Walker, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hearing us citizens, do we have anybody who would like to speak? Seeing anyone move on. Community schools update, Ms. Sversky, Ms. Devlin.
Yes, Ms. Devlin and I and Ms. Sutton had an opportunity to go with some of our principals and the United Way to Allentown, which has the community schools that have been going on for over eight to 10, almost 15 years at some of them. And so some of our administrators had a chance to go and seek the buildings and the classrooms and some of the things that they're doing at those community schools. And one of the things that I would want to share with you is the main goal that I learned from that experience was that whatever the community school goal was, was everything that all of the different agencies and all of the different organizations, they all championed around that one goal. So for example, if it was an elementary school, the goal was to have all of the students in third grade proficient, so literacy, able to read by third grade. That was the goal. For the middle schools, which we were able to go see a middle school, it was their goal was eighth grade, to have literacy and math proficiency for all students. So everything that was going on in the building was really based on that. And it was a really eye-opening piece to see all the different organizations working for the goal of our students. And that's what I had taken out of it. While if Daria or Diane wanted to share one piece that they had taken out, we are asking our principals to come to share out with you next week. But I do have in this packet all five of their summaries of each of our community schools, so Edison, Pfeiffer Burley, McKinley, East, and Strong Vincent. So all five of those building summaries are here for you to look at. If you end up having any questions, our principals will be here, will be here next week, so we can answer some of those questions for you. But I truly felt when we talked to Mr. Palito that it was really important for you to know that it is a process and it does take time, but if we can do some of the things that they've done at that, in those schools, working with United Way and our agencies, it can make a huge difference for our students.
How long have they been involved with this?
The one we were at was 10 years. It was, and I don't know either one of you, I thought someone said 15 years for some of the other schools. And they actually, their United Way, they serviced more than just one district. And I think our United Way is working on that as well for our community. So there were three major districts that they had worked, they were working with 28, I think 28 schools.
Excuse me, was every school involved? Was every school in the district involved?
No, no. It was similar to what we have. It was not every school in the district. It was certain schools that were involved. Daria, Diane, anything else?
I think I just, you know, I think we're really grateful to United Way of Erie County. They have really taken the lead on this. They're connecting us with, you know, peers down in Allentown. I wish we could find a model closer than Allentown, honestly, so we don't have to drive all that way, but it's been really valuable. Diane and I both now, this is our second time, and to see what this could become is really inspiring. I think we've gotten, you know, there's a lot of work to do, and as we do that, we sometimes wonder, is it worth it? But when we see what's happening in those buildings, all resources aligned around student success, it's very promising, and I think we all feel very excited about what's possible.
Thank you. Right on to you again with school magnet programs.
So we just kind of want to give you updates, or we feel like there may be things that you wanted to know regarding some of the issues that we're talking about today. So one of them would be our magnets and where we're at at this point. We have scheduled a meeting on February 20th with Mike Thompson. And Mike Thompson is one of the people who work for, as a contractor, for PDE and for IU5 in working with the career initiative that we have. That's district-wide, that's statewide. So he's going to come. He actually, he was an administrator who did some work at Middleton High School, creating the magnets and doing some pathways. So what we've done is we've worked, we're going to work with him on the 20th, and all of our administrators are going to be there from the high school to share out what's going on there on our programming side. And we also have our middle school, because we are adding all those electives. So he's going to hear what we're doing this year and in our future hopes. Then he's going to actually go over to Erie High, and he's going to go over to Wilson and see our schools in action, and then come back and give us some recommendations. We're going to share out what we are hoping to do in the near few years, and then get his advice on, is it a three-year plan, five-year plan? What would make most sense as we move forward as a group? So what I have for you is some of the things that we're going to share with him. One of them, and I may have already shared this with you, this is what we used for our open house over at Erie High. It is basically a pamphlet to share what we have so far in our pathways and in our magnets. So that's one, I'm going to send one down. Another one was a good visual that we have been looking at using, and Nora helped create these next two as we've been working on the programming. So one of them, it's a quick read, it's a nice map that you can look at where a student starts and where they're finished. One of the things I need you to be aware is we are working on career awareness. We're not there yet for K-5 specifically. We're doing some work, and the state is requiring some work on that. So that's the second sheet. The third sheet is some of the options that we have currently. And again, Nora and the team has been working on creating our handbook, so it's ready to give out to families and to, the teachers have been working on their course selections and preparing for this coming year. Our eighth graders have already applied to the schools that they're, and their pathways that they're hoping to get involved in. And at Erie High and at Collegiate, they will be doing their ninth, 10th, and 11th graders and seeing where they fit in. So then our scheduling, which was last year very, very rushed, is going to be able to take their time, give our students an opportunity to really look and see what we're doing. One of the requests came the other day from one of the middle schools, if we could work on having like a shadow day or a day where the students can actually go over to Erie High together in a bus, see the school, tour the school, hear what the administrators have to say, so they have a better understanding of what they're getting into and if it's what they're looking for. So we will have more information for you next month as we continue the work. And on, as I said, on February 20th, our hope is that we're going to get some good feedback from an experienced person who has worked on pathways and specifically magnet schools.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yeah, I just want to say how happy I am to see this brochure, because one of the things, one of the things that I had, I had a conversation with somebody, and they had a misconception that when they joined the schools, that when we opened up Erie High, that all of our career and technical programs went out the window. They didn't realize that we were still providing those programs. So I'm very happy to see this, and I think that that's something that we have to kind of focus on a little bit as far as letting, you know, letting people know that we're still doing all the things that we've done and we're adding to those programs. So I think, you know, it's a wonderful thing. I'm happy about it. Thank you.
That's exactly what we said. We feel that, we've heard some misconceptions in some of the meetings that we've gone to, and we think that we need to really share out what's happening. And the more that we can share out the positive things that are going on, the better it is for our students. I have number three, too, along with Brian.
Yes. Strategic plan.
So we're moving along with the strategic plan and really starting to prepare all the information we'll need for our first meeting, which is scheduled on February 22nd. The surveys are all out. At this point, right now, we have 741 teacher surveys, which is 90% of the staff, which is great. Students were at 6,800, which is 60%, and parents are still a little low, they're at 211. We're working, Daria's working to get the word out so that we can get that participation up, but our consultants were actually very happy with that number. They said it was pretty consistent with what they've seen in other districts. The curriculum review has been very extensive. Bea has been working with her team on that. She's going to go over that. I think we found it to be very helpful for us. It's really challenged us in, you know, we've kind of taken a real close look at what we're doing and asked some hard questions, and I think in the end it's going to really yield some results. Sophie?
Sure. Angela? So the first page of the packet I have given you was the strategic plan part that we have to do prior to any meetings where performance facts come in. And so when we looked at what their recommendation was, they had many of the different facets, and that's what is all of the curriculum areas that you see on that sheet. That lists everything that groups of individuals, administrators, and teachers are working on to look at what we currently have. And just a little bit higher, Angela, if you wouldn't mind. No, the other way, sorry. Right about there, that's great. So as you can see, the current state is where we are now. So what all of these groups had to do was to say, what are we doing right now in this content area throughout the district, elementary, middle, and high school? And then the second side, which is the right-hand corner, is the improvement opportunities. What are some recommendations? What are some thoughts that, what could we do better? What could we really look at for the future? What would that look like? So each group has met already, and they had created one for every area that you saw on that sheet that I've given you. This is an example of one of them. This is our health and physical education. And so in each piece, and you can move up, we have the standards. And so what happens is they'd say, what are our standards? What are we looking at right now? And how can we improve what we're doing? You can keep on going. The next step looks at assessments, the summative, formative, and diagnostic assessments. What are we doing? And then what do we need to do to improve? And again, each of these areas is done by one group. You can continue, please. Then they look at the curriculum we have. So we looked specifically, this is a good example, physical education, literacy. We were able, if you recall, we had that big grant where Pam Wiley was here as a facilitator. We had the opportunity to purchase pieces. We had the opportunity to really look at what the standards were and how to best engage our students. And then the other side would be, what do we need? And here's an example. The one piece talks about the suicide prevention program. There's a health component to it for K through five that we wouldn't have. And it deals with stress, it deals with various issues. You can continue up, please. Then it's the instruction, what's going on in the classrooms, what's happening? And then what do we still need? What do we need to do on the right-hand side? You can keep going. Then we look at the materials. You can see how comprehensive this is. This is just one, this is elementary. So they look at the, all of the instructional materials and resources we have, and then they say, what could we do in the future? Or what would make it better? What can we do to make it better for our students? And then we have interventions that need to be taken place, what we have, what they recommend. And then the last one is professional development and collaboration, what we currently have, and what the recommendation would be. So this one you just saw was the elementary. If you can click on the other one, there's one for middle school, and then there's one for high school. And that's in, again, in one area. I'm just going to, if you want to keep going, I wanted to just tell you about one thing in the middle school, because this is something we've been talking about for a while under health and phys ed. Some of it's very similar, right there's good. Where you see the note on the right-hand side, it says swimming skills and water safety should be taught in the facilities we have. We now have middle school, and we have East, and we have Vincent with pools, but we don't have it at Wilson. So we're starting to talk about that. What can we do? Can we offer swimming in sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade? So that's that, what can we do? That's that other side, too. And again, if you keep going, Angela, this is the middle school H and PE. And you can keep going.
Can you talk a little bit about the process, too?
Sure.
Good for the board to hear who's been involved in developing this.
Sure. So on that sheet, and Angela, if you want to keep going, and you can even show that other one, I'll continue to speak. So the first step was to do an initial draft, and a rough draft is the first set. So then what we did was we gave the entire packet, which is all of these, which is, it's a good binder, of all of those content areas to everyone who participated. So if I did health and phys ed, I was still going to get literacy, I was going to get math, I was going to get everything here, along with the people who are facilitating and the teachers. So then, this past Monday, we met up and all of us got together, and we split up into three groups, and we went through step by step each one of these, what we have now, what we need, and people gave more input. So then they took everything and they took them back. They're going to give another draft, and on Friday, we have six administrators and six teachers who are going to review it, who have never seen anything. They're reviewing the entire packet. They're the second group that looks at it. They will send us some additional information that they feel, and then we'll have the final draft ready, and then we're going to send that to Performance Facts, so they'll have the final draft.
And we'll share a copy with the board once that's in final form as well. But it's really been a great process, I think, just to take a step back and talk about where we are with our curriculum. And I think already that we've identified a couple areas where, if we started talking through this, it was kind of an aha moment. We need to think about this a little differently and see if we can move things forward. So it's been good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, I had a, just a couple questions. I was just doing a little bit of research on a couple of things that you had posted, and I was just curious, they might be there, and I'm not aware where they are. The one being, since we're talking about the physical education piece, is there, is there a component, because we're going to run into this, where we have an offer for kids who might, due to trauma-related reasons, due to gender-related reasons, aren't maybe comfortable doing PE or the changing or the swimming and those kind of options? Do we have stuff in place for that?
So physical education is a requirement by the state. So what we would do is, most likely, it would depend on each situation, they are required to take some physical education. It may be that we talk with our, with, you know, the individual, the family, what can we do to support that child and that student? And it may be an alternative way of having physical education, or maybe it is the health side of it, but they are required to take certain pieces.
And then the second one is, as I was kind of going through the Shape America and then reading, reading some of the stuff they have listed, I think it's a great program, there's a lot of awesome resources on it. The one thing that I was curious about, again, is just when we're teaching kids about the emotional element of it and how to handle a lot of the stress at which they do with riding the waves, I didn't see any trauma component on there, and I hate to keep bringing that up, but I'm really worried that this is an area that we might be missing, just with helping kids get the vocabulary on knowing that things in their home might not be safe, or how do they talk about this, the language of it. And maybe this is an opportunity, since we're revamping a lot of the curriculum, to kind of include that trauma piece for the kids.
That's a wonderful idea. And that's why, when you look at this, a lot of times, that's why we want so many eyes on it, because what one person thinks may need to be added to it. And that's what happened on Monday. There were a lot of people that were just giving input. It might not be exactly what we're thinking about, but why not put it in? And then we have those conversations. Those conversations are very rich, and you're absolutely right. When we were in Allentown, one of the things that the school that we were at had a really robust trauma, you know, resource that they were using. And so that is a great point. So as the superintendent said, if we can get these to you, so you can look at them prior to us getting them out to Performance Facts, we will do that.
Thank you. Surplus buildings, Mr. Palito.
Well, as you know, we did not receive any bids on our surplus buildings last month, so we are moving ahead with an RFP to contract with a commercial real estate agent to help us facilitate the sale of those buildings. Randy did send out the RFP last week.
Last week, and it's actually an RFQ.
Okay.
Request for quotations and requalifications. It went out last week, and they are due noon on Friday. So we hope to present something to the board next week. Can I add one other thing? Just a reminder, we, the sale for the old central kitchen did get approved by the court, and we close on that property tomorrow afternoon.
Move on to alternative education recovery for facilities, Mr. Palito.
So because we have not sold any of the buildings, we've been looking at the possibility of maybe using one of those buildings to consolidate our alternative education programs and our credit recovery program. And just to give you kind of an idea of what we're doing right now, we have four locations across the city that we are leasing. This is for credit recovery, alternative ed, and actually our science materials center as well. The total cost for rent and facility costs for those four locations is $439,000. We did a quick estimate, and we're still working through the numbers, but we believe that if we were to consolidate all of them into one of our closed buildings, that we would be able to save about $200,000 a year and improve services. Neil is here tonight, if you want to talk a little bit about what your vision is there.
Yeah. As far as taking all the programs and putting them in one place, not to make it personal besides making it easier on my life, it would be the same thing that we've talked about with the equity piece. If all of the programs were in one place, then we could share all the resources that all three of the programs or three of the locations would really have. The SEREED staff would be together in one building, the school district staff would then be together in one building versus being at different sites. So as far as just getting information out to everybody would be a lot easier, but then as far as collaboration between all of those groups, it then becomes so much easier, and we can increase the product that we're at least providing for the students.
The other thing with the credit recovery, it's been so successful that we have reached capacity at the family center. So if we're looking to expand that, it would, we would need to find another location. The other piece that we really like about combining those, credit recovery and alternative ed, is that credit recovery would be a nice transition from alternative ed for the students go back to Erie High with the rest of the population. And likewise, with credit recovery, if we have some kids that are struggling a little bit, there will be some behavior, and mental health support's great in that building, that they can really address and address those with the students.
Mr. President? Yes. I think we need to more or less make a decision prior to us moving forward with Randy's RFQ, because you don't want to have a property that's either listed or the realtor makes efforts and gets somebody interested in it into a building and say, oh, by the way, we decided we don't like it. So I think what we need to do is, you know, let's look at a facility that's going to accommodate what we want first, then the remaining buildings move forward. Do we have a recommendation?
Not yet, but we did put a caveat in the RFQ that we may be wanting to use one of the buildings. We wouldn't be bringing you the realtor recommendation until the March meeting, and I can assure you can have a recommendation on the consolidation by that point.
Mr. President? Yes. When you were citing, you were also used to like the science warehouse, right?
Yes.
So, but the only problem with that is that our buildings, I mean, because we thought of this before, when we had Burton, and we were going to do that, but the problem was is that they need to use jiddies, and you have to have a solid cement, you know, I mean, you have to have the floor to be able to hold the jiddies and such. So when we figure out the cost, we're going to have to try to, you know, whatever that would be to add on to that, or whatever we would need to do, and when we're picking the building even, if there's some place that you can utilize that. But that's all, I'm just, when I heard you say that, it was like, well, we thought that way before, but there was, we ran into that snag, so.
We have Eric assessing that right now. He thinks there is one of the buildings that should be able to handle, accommodate that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm just curious, how much do we pay in these for the science materials center?
$25,000 a year.
A year. And also, is there a possibility that we could start to market our program and our equipment and make it self-sustaining so that we could recoup some of that money to pay for that lease? I know we used to have other school districts that were interested in our program.
We leased to Rise right now, they're the ones that do that. But I believe we do have some curricular work that needs to be done on that to align it to the PA core before we really could go out and market it.
And market it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. 2018-19 budget.
So as I notified you yesterday, we did get some good news. The $14 million adjustment was in the governor's proposal. This is actually the first time since we've been promised this money that we've actually seen it in black and white, so it was very reassuring to me that this is going to move forward, and we are going to see it in current years. Just to give you a rundown of the increases excluding the $14 million, for next year, the governor's budget proposes an increase in our basic ed subsidy of $1.2 million, which is a 1.6% increase. Our special ed would increase $195,000, which is about a 2% increase. And he also put an emphasis on career and tech, that is increasing $100,000, which is almost a 12% increase. So between those three major line items, we would see a one and a half million dollar increase in our subsidy, which is great news.
Yes.
So the additional $14 million is in the governor's proposal, but do, how much do we have to fear that the legislature will haggle over that or backtrack or reject? I don't want to suggest that they will, but I just, I've been through some of this before. I just wonder, is it, it's good news that it's in his proposal, but that doesn't guarantee it.
I think that, you know, it gives us another level of assurance, but certainly, you know, until we but certainly, you know, until we receive the $14 million, which really triggers it being legislatively put into the 18-19 budget and beyond, there, you know, certainly is going to be a little bit of concern that, you know, at some point, somebody could decide that they didn't like what was done last year and propose something new.
Now, we still haven't received the original $14?
We have not. We've been told that it's in process and that we should receive it by the beginning of March.
I'm not by nature a negative pessimist, but, you know, we haven't even gotten that yet. I'm finding it hard to be happy that next year we might get a promise but not get it through. I'm sorry, I just, it's frustrating.
It is frustrating, and we, you know, we've lost another year because we've been waiting for all this to come together. So we're hoping that it does happen rather quickly.
Do we have a way to mannerily tell them that or gently?
We have been.
I assume so, but I just wanted to hear, thank you.
Bobby.
Mr. President, so actually, we're going to get about $29 million infusion, even though they're looking at different years. But we're actually getting paid on a quarterly basis. So we are going to get the 15.2 in one fell swoop.
This year, I believe that we're going to get the $14 million in one check.
Right.
In the following years, it will be built into our basic education subsidy, which is distributed at multiple times throughout the year.
Right, yeah, three or four times a year. So that's quite an infusion of capital. Could we allocate money for additional?
I'll add it to the list.
Okay, anything on, anybody have anything on new business? Anything on any other matter before we go to executive session?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Today, I just wanted to bring up, it was a pretty interesting discussion that I got to partake in. We were at the Bayhawks game that was sponsored by the Five Peps. We were able to meet a gentleman who runs an organization called Erie Multimedia. And basically, they film all the games. But through this dialogue, they were telling us about this new hardware technological advances that they have where they're able to go into rooms or buildings and film them and essentially get a 3D scan in like real time of what's up of the place. And they can do it relatively quickly and relatively cheaply. And I think that this is a discussion that maybe we could open up to the board to talk about something that we could have done for our schools for available to first responders. So if there was ever an event in which they needed to know the exact layout of a school, they would know on their way. And the owner had even said that he would maybe do demos for us to show us just what they're capable of doing. And I think that this would add another level of security for our students and for the teachers. Not that this needs to be made like access to everybody, but I do think that the first responders, it would be a great asset for them to have available to them.
Anybody else have anything else? If not, we'll take a five-minute break. And we'll be soon. And we'll resume in our other work.